For board members, as a reminder, same practice as the last few meetings. All of your microphones are turned off when you're ready to speak. Please make sure you turn them on and bring them close to your mouth. Helps with the bringing up the sound for both those in the audience as well as those that are participating in Zoom. Mr. Fenders, do we have anybody logging in through Zoom? We do. Dr. Morthe, we're ready to begin wherever you are.
All right. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 812-8567-5128, and the required password is 874304. All right, roll call, Mr. Leaker.
Mr. Gallo.
Present.
Mr. Kizmarsky. Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Ziccone.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Ms. Devenera.
Here.
Mr. De Silva. Mr. Denise.
Here.
And Dr. Morthe.
Here. Adequate notice of agenda. This meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record, specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on August 31, 2022, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Salute to the flag. Mr. Gallo, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I do need a motion this evening to recess to executive session, which should be fairly brief. Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. Gallo. All right, we will be back shortly.
Good evening. Do not like. I think we're at about our 13th presentation, perhaps, Dr. Dittoro, of HIV self-assessment. Let's move on to our superintendent's report, Dr. Di Torro.
Thank you very much. To start the superintendent's report, we have a presentation that's specific to state requirements. It's our HIV Self-Assessment. Presentation, Ms. Rizzo, is going to be providing that information to the community.
Good evening. I think we're at about our 13th presentation, perhaps, Dr. Dittoro, of HIV self-assessment. Ultimately, what occurs is that we have a process in which we are presented with a rubric from the Department of Ed. And I want to make it very clear that the rubric is more so about the procedural and the policy and the execution of those aspects of it. It's not about whether or not we correctly called something HIV or if everyone's happy with the way we determine HIV. It is strictly and most so about curriculum, instruction, and procedural obligations. So building principals take the rubric and they self-evaluate with their school safety teams. They gather their evidence. They maintain their own evidence. They have to keep that until the Department of Ed advises us otherwise. And they determine their own scores on the rubric. They then present their results to me. I review them based on what I know about their programs, obviously, based on the data that they've provided, their evidence that they provide. And I either affirm their scores or we revisit them and have a conversation about that. The rubric scores in a range of core elements. Again, it's about programs. It's about overarching concepts of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Core element one has five indicators that are about our programs and approaches. Core element two is about training on the HIV policy. And then core element three is about staff instruction and training programs. And yes, the board did sit in on HIV training at their last meeting. And so they helped us earn a high score on that. We appreciate that. We also score ourselves on curriculum and instruction related to HIV and all of that. There's also scoring on personnel. Do we have all of the people we need in order to fulfill the requirements of HIV? We look at our school-level HIV incident reporting. Our investigation procedures, again, it's about the procedures, meeting the timelines, meeting the paperwork requirements, and all other aspects. And ultimately, our HIV reporting to you, the Board of Ed, and to the State Department, as we do. Scores for the rubric are determined based on zero points to three points. Obviously, two and three are meet requirements or exceeds all the requirements. The maximum score that a school building can achieve is 78. And ultimately, the district grade is the average of all of our schools. As I've done in the past, I'll just give you a roll call on each of the buildings and their self-assessed scores. And then we'll look at the district scores. And I'll end it by advising you as to my recommendations to Dr. Dittoro for our goals for the future. Small High School received a rubric score of 77 out of 78. Betsy Ross, self-assessed at 75 out of 78, with maximum scores in four, five, six, seven, and eight of the core elements. George Washington achieved a score of 76 out of 78 and again awarded themselves maximum scores in the core elements that are listed below. Lastly, is Landon P. Meadows, achieving 77 out of 78 on the rubric. So the district average, obviously, is 76 out of 78 total points. And every building within the district awarded themselves and earned the total points in core elements four, six, seven, and eight. So those were our commonalities. In all core elements, every building scored either meets all requirements or exceeds the requirements. So that is essential to point out because, you know, we often struggle on how are we going to get that one last extra point to be considered exceeding when, you know, we're turning all gears and meeting as much as we can relative to the procedural requirements. So it is often one meeting shy. So we've done two meetings instead of three in order to be exceeding. And those are just areas, again, of fine tuning and a matter of timing. In 2122, we had a total of 88 investigations, 26 of which are confirmed cases. This is of no surprise, and I'll break out some more tallies for you. But we were expecting this type of response post-COVID, certainly all that we've been talking about in terms of the loss of socialization due to separate learning environments. So we anticipated that this would be indicative of the development of our children. So here's our total investigation over total confirmed. And you can see it ranges from the year 2015, 2016. I cut out the prior years to condense you to more closely to where we are. And of course, we recognize that 2021 school year was an anomaly as well as 19 and 20 because we were in some various moods of either half-day in, half-day out, or out altogether. But when we look at 2122, Dr. Fair and Dr. Dittoro asked me to really isolate the concern about our one elementary school because that seems to have a pattern that is rather off-kilter. Oh, my, sorry. Rather off-kilter compared to prior years. And when we looked at this and we analyzed this through our school safety team, what we realized is that, in essence, for our Betsy Ross friends, there was just a bit of an adjustment need, particularly in the area of recess and social interactions. And so working with the new principal, Melissa Rouse, and the safety team, I think I'm going to focus on maintaining the fidelity to the school-wide, classroom-supported, responsive classroom. And we're also asking that parents partner with us to help reinforce and shape peer-to-peer interactions. And we're also looking at how we can plan and coordinate a little bit more of a structured recess period. Because when we break out the data in terms of, well, what were those incidents? And where were they most egregious? We found it to be time at recess for Betsy Ross kids. So just a little bit of work with our friends in that community. And we believe just that tune-up will be enough to get them back to where their data used to be. All cases referred to the district were investigated. And all cases were investigated within the timeline set forth by the law. You know, not knowing the magnitude of the law when we first received it from the Department of Ed, I stepped up to the superintendent at the time and the Board of Ed and said, based on my special ed background, I can assure you that we will have compliance in any code mandated requirements of this law. And to date, we have successfully investigated all cases. From the day this law was implemented, we have, through the efforts of our building principals and our school specialists, have investigated every case within the 10-day timeframe permitted by law. So in 2122, we had set two goals. We had set training program goals and opportunities for HIV members to participate and time for them to meet. I had referenced that earlier as an area in the rubric where you could lose a point that we could feasibly gain back, in which we did this year. So I'm proud to say that we met our goal, sometimes via Zoom. And hopefully, this year, we'll be able to do that more so in person. So we always look to our strategic plan as our guiding light, our north star. And when we look at our strategic plan, certainly the goal statement regarding SEL about fostering a demonstratively supporting learning environment that empowers students to be safe physically and emotionally and allows for the healthy development of balanced and well-rounded individuals who will authentically integrate into our communities while simultaneously achieving their academic, career, and personal goals. And within that, I picked some areas about creating programs and providing tools for parents with the resources needed to support their children, both socially and emotionally, and regularly evaluating the social-emotional, student health and wellness, curricular offerings, and experiences. So when I look at the strategic plan, I say so of that strategic plan, what are the goals that I'm going to develop with the building principals, with Dr. Dittoro, Dr. Fair, and Dr. Bobino that is going to match our strategic plan and ultimately meet the areas of relative deficiency that we have in our self-assessment? And I'm making the recommendation to the administration that we look at Core Element One that talks about annually assessing our HIV programs. We haven't assessed them formally with any type of survey in quite some time. And I do believe that we can twofold this in a rather valuable way. We already have the inclusivity audit, which is taking place within the district. And the Department of Ed is about to release to all districts a climate assessment as well. So I'm saying that through our inclusivity audit, we should obviously participate in that, and that will yield data for us. And I'm recommending that we just review and consider the climate assessment. I haven't had time to dig deep into it. It was just released to me last week through Professional Development in the state. I need to take a look at it. But I really feel strongly that the assessment that we're already on, our inclusivity audit, is an opportunity for us to take the data and gain insight into our school community and assist in reinforcing the positive learning conditions and prevent... what are the goals that I'm going to develop with the building principals, with Dr. Dettoro, Dr. Fair, and Dr. Bavino? That is going to match our strategic plan and ultimately meet the areas of relative deficiency that we have in our self-assessment. And I'm making the recommendation to the administration that we look at core element one, that talks about annually assessing our HIV programs. We haven't assessed them formally with any type of survey in quite some time. And I do believe that we can twofold this in a rather valuable way. We already have the inclusivity audit, which is taking place within the district. And the Department of Ed is about to release to all districts a climate assessment as well. So I'm saying that through our inclusivity audit, we should obviously participate in that, and that will yield data for us. And I'm recommending that we just review and consider the climate assessment. I haven't had time to dig deep into it. It was just released to me last week through Professional Development in the state. I need to take a look at it. But I really feel strongly that the assessment that we're already on, our inclusivity audit, is an opportunity for us to take the data and gain insight into our school community and assist in reinforcing the positive learning conditions and prevent any at-risk situations. So that's really at the heart of it for me relative to HIV. And certainly, as you know, in order for a case to be deemed harassment, intimidation, and bullying, it had to in some way be an insult towards a protected class, any and all protected classes. So I think that that's a great way to twofold our inclusivity audit. Additionally, under core element two, training programs, we have just received on August 28th, new interpretation of the HIV law from the Department of Ed as a result of the state of New Jersey suffering some lawsuits, in which we have to tweak the policy, as Mr. Denise knows. It's being updated again, so we will have that in our policy committee. And we will need to be educating the students and certainly the parent community about the new aspects of the policy. So I anticipate that as a training opportunity, hopefully through the Parent Academy and obviously at building-based experiences. So, you know, with your affirmation, Dr. Dettoro and the board, I'd like to submit our scores of the self-assessment going forward and allow the Department of Ed to review them and get back to us next spring. We dig.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the boards specific to the presentation?
Just have one, Lisa. Going back to the numbers of reported versus confirmed, the Ridge had 30 reported with five confirmed. What do you attribute that discrepancy to? That seems like a big number of reported versus confirmed. Is that just, we just need more education for parents? Or what is that, what do you attribute that to?
Well, the law does allow an option that we in Maua don't take advantage of, and rightfully so, in my opinion, and certainly the way that I counsel our superintendent. The law states that there is no, we accept and adhere to, there is no opportunity to excuse an investigation. So the minute the words harassment, intimidation, or bullying are used, placed in writing, referenced to, or that which we observe that we believe may meet the litmus of HIV, we conduct an investigation. So there is no discretion on an administrator and a building's right to not investigate. So what you are seeing is, when, and I use this internally, when the alarm is wrong, we investigate. So every case that comes forward as such is done. So that's where you see high numbers of investigation, less likely to be founded.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo. I just want to publicly thank Ms. Rizzo for not just this presentation, the amount of work that she does on preparing our administrative team as well as the individuals who do a ton of work at the school level because the amount of cases that were up there, the amount of hours that go into each case because we want to do it right, and there's also obviously paperwork connected to it. Ms. Rizzo is involved in most of those cases. And more importantly, really trains our administrative team on how to analyze and dissect each of the different variables that are present in each case. So thank you so much to Ms. Rizzo, and thank you so much to the building-based teams who really put a lot of time and effort into making sure that we're doing right by our kids and we're addressing any and all the situations. So thank you. If you notice on the agenda, there is another report. I'm going to ask Dr. Marley if we can table the 2021, 2022 Students' Safety Data System presentation. We still have time to present it. There's a couple pieces I want to look further at, so at a future meeting, I'll bring it back up if that's okay.
I think that should be fine. Any objections? Okay, we'll table that then.
There's, the past couple meetings, there's been a number of conversations, questions, concerns that were posed specific to curriculum that is present and up for vote for tonight. During the last meeting, Dr. Bavino got up and made a very thorough presentation specific to the comprehensive health and PE standards and the curriculum that's aligned to that. If I can just read a little bit of a summary of what took place then and up until now. I think it would really shine a light for the board of where we were and where we are. At the August 10th board meeting, we presented information on how Maua Public Schools will deliver instruction to meet New Jersey's comprehensive health and physical education standard requirements. Following this meeting on Monday, August 15th, we sent a letter to the school community introducing the projected curriculum and providing families with a video recording of the presentation, the slide presentation, and a link to the New Jersey health standards. This letter invited families to share their thoughts or questions on the CHPE standards and content before this evening's board meeting. We also posted all information on our curriculum website, including the email for correspondence, video, and presentation. On August 22nd, when our parent portals opened to families, all founders were prompted and required to read our health education letter, which outlines major topics covered in health for each grade level. Over the last couple weeks, we have received nine emails about the health standards in our proposed curriculum. Of those nine emails, six emails were focused on support of the curriculum work or asking for clarification for different areas such as information on grade levels not presented, help with their online one-call system, information on the opt-out option, or if there was a health grade 10 course. One email shared a parent's reservation about the standards and the content at the middle school level. Two of the emails offered suggestions, one asking to create at-home assignments for more sensitive topics, while the other advocated for our fifth-grade students to learn about female and male puberty changes, hormones, reproduction, for both genders, not just one gender. As discussed in the previous board meeting, we have reached out to the State Education Department to understand if we can use at-home assignments in place of particular lessons. In discussion with the Department of Education, they reiterated that all standards must be taught by a certified staff member and that at-home assignments are considered homework and can be used to reinforce the lesson that was taught in school. Further, all standards that are taught by a certified teacher to demonstrate content learned and standards met must be assessed. Therefore, at-home assignments are simply homework and cannot be a substitute for instruction by a teacher. Regarding providing female and male information about puberty to all students at the fifth-grade level, we have considered the suggestion and have discussed this as a team. We feel that with this being the first conversation students will have about their bodies' physical changes, our fifth-grade students would feel more comfortable in separate settings where they can ask questions more freely and without embarrassment. While we will not provide information on both male and female changes to all students in fifth grade, we feel this is one way to engage our families with home extension opportunities. We will continue to provide founders with information about both female and male puberty changes and video links so that the families can talk with their children about both boy and girl changes if they would like. Thank you to the community members that provided suggestions. Based on family and community feedback, there are no required changes to the presented curriculum. As stated in our communication in previous board meetings, Maua Township Schools maintain that we philosophically believe parents, guardians, are our partners when discussing critical family life lessons and topics. We look forward to working with you to provide your children with a well-rounded health education that will prepare them for living a healthy lifestyle. So it's my hope that that summary provides really a breakdown of what we presented, where we were, understanding the sensitivity of the content, and obviously the time and attention that the team took to make sure that was created appropriate for our students that we serve, but also making sure that we were listening to the community, understanding their perspective, and taking that into consideration during this process as well. So I appreciate you allowing me the time to do that. Last but not least, I just want to say how excited we are for tomorrow. It's our first day back. It's great to see staff in the audience. So welcome to the GW family and Ramapo Ridge family. It was so wonderful to go into the schools over the past couple days and weeks and seeing teachers take time out of their summer to come in and prepare to welcome the kids and the excitement of talking to the teachers. It's going to be a fantastic year. We're really looking forward to totally maximizing on all the possibilities ahead. So welcome back unofficially to the teachers. I know tomorrow's official, but thank you so much for all that you do. I know we say this at board meetings, it's great to see you in the audience. So thank you so much for all you have done and what you will do this year. So welcome back.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Dettoro, and thank you very much, Ms. Rizzo, for your comprehensive presentation as well. And I appreciate in the self-assessment, your reflection and ability to self-reflect that when even, for example, you brought up about one particular school, it's good that we're looking and that those are things right on the radar. So we thank you for always keeping us a step ahead, Ms. Rizzo. Thank you.
Lovely.
Mr. Blaker, do we have a board secretary's report today?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. A couple items to highlight in my report for this evening. At the last meetings, I spoke about our audit. Our auditors were here last week. They conducted their fieldwork on our 2122 financials. That fieldwork is now done. They've gone back to their offices where the report will be written. And a couple of follow-up items they'll reach out to complete. They do have a statutory deadline to complete that audit and present the report back to myself and to the board members by the beginning of December. So that process, note this step on the process, is completed with the fieldwork now being completed. Also, a carryover from last meeting is talking about some buildings and grounds and maintenance items that have been worked on this past summer, and some of them have been completed. Just wanted to highlight a couple of those projects. One is roofing work that we've done at Maua High School to address a couple areas. Completed HVAC installation in Joyce Kilmer School in the 300 wing. That's both HVAC systems as well as controls for those systems. We're making great progress on the storefront and window replacement project that we have at Betsy Ross, George Washington School, and Ramapo Ridge. Some of that project will extend into the school year, but it's all going to be done. The remaining parts of that project can all be done after school hours with no interruption. Two pavement projects were completed at Maua High School and Joyce Kilmer. Last couple things to highlight is continuing to work on the grandstand project that's slated for later on this winter, and HVAC work at George Washington School scheduled for summer of '23. Also want to thank the Eagle Scouts. That made some great contributions to our facilities as well. Couple projects at the high school, Betsy Ross, and George Washington. And lastly, to thank our friends at the Maua Schools Foundation, a contribution that they had made during the most recent drought cycle helped improve Ramapo Ridge Middle School with an outdoor patio area behind the school. So once again, thank you all that, all those that helped us as well as our maintenance facilities team and the vendors that we work with to keep our school updated for our students and staff. And last item for me to announce, Mr. Kizmarsky, who could not be with us this evening, usually highlights any athletic events that are coming up. So I wanted to take the opportunity to his absence to share that the fall sports season is here, and our first varsity football game will be tomorrow evening here at Maua against Kinnon at 7:00 p.m. Hope to see some of you there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blaker. Dr. Fair, do we have assistant superintendent report? Thank you.
Yes, I do. So I have three items for this evening. The first is, since our last board meeting, we had our new hire orientation that took place from August 15th through 18th. We have a great group of new staff members joining our team. There was collective excitement amongst all of them, and we're really excited to welcome them officially tomorrow. The second piece is, there have been several board meetings that we've highlighted Maua High School and their work with the Career Pathways. I know that we've talked about real purposeful branding of the really great programs that are going on over at the high school. I wanted to highlight the work that's been done on their website. So under the academics tab, you can see that there is information about the Career Pathways program. Over the summer, Mr. Pascal and his high school team showcased the program's great work, not only in updating their website, but the inclusion of additional resources that weren't there before. And particularly, they reinforced the new Thunderbird externship program, career exploration, and job shadowing. So this website serves as an integral tool in sharing relevant information on all that the Career Pathways have to offer to our high school students and their parents. And also, Maua High School has continued this summer to promote more dual enrollment partnerships and opportunities for our students to earn college credit as they take courses right here on our campus and continue to develop our internship and externship experiences for our students. On this website is a list of our mentor partnership and education resource catalog that was compiled by one of our staff members, Estania Noel. She's done a great job at really putting together a resource for students that serves as a launching point for those students to begin those potential relationships, to begin internships or externships, although they will be assisted by their school counselors and staff as well. And the third piece is, great congratulations to Kristin Free. Kristin Free is a member of our Science Department at Maua High School. I know that it was tweeted and retweeted and that's going around. I thought it was important to also highlight her here this evening, especially since she's so excited. The College Board is currently developing a new full-year advanced placement course in anatomy and physiology. Mrs. Free serves as our anatomy and physiology teacher here in Maua. And after applying to be on the National Writing Team to create this course, she officially learned last week that she has been selected. So this National Writing Team consists of college faculty and experienced high school teachers that will develop the working draft of the course framework for the proposed AP Anatomy and Physiology course for the nation, which is awesome. And Kristin is one of 12 educators selected nationwide to take part in this honor. As I shared, she's really excited to be a part of this distinguished panel, and we're really proud of her. So I thought that was worthy of highlighting this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fair, and that's very exciting stuff. No, no, thank you. Okay, my report. So welcome back, I guess, in about 12 hours or so to teachers? Maybe 12, a little more than 12. We'll see you tomorrow morning and officially welcome you back. But again, we do appreciate all the efforts and enthusiasm that people have in returning back to school this year. It's going to be good to see all the faces in the auditorium again, I think, for everyone. And also for students, you know, enjoy, kind of, enjoy the end of summer, as they say. Make it a good Labor Day weekend. And we'll see all the students back on Tuesday. And again, I think everyone's going to be looking forward to a really great year, and we wish you all the best. I would say, have a small goal for this year as a student and have a large goal. And think about what you want to do and accomplish this year. I think that's a way to start the new year for you this year. Anyway, welcome back to all and good luck to all. All right, that's all I have for my report. Let's go on to board committee reports. No one. Okay, well, then I will continue. All right, Mr. Copeland, give me a break, and then I will do my board committee report.
I have a really quick one, so not too long a break for community relations. Obviously, first day of school is Tuesday. I don't think I need to remind anyone that. But a lot of questions always come up at the beginning of the year about back-to-school nights and when they are. So I just want to kind of highlight them in my report. JK, back-to-school nights, September 13th at 6:00. And then Betsy, GW, Linape are all on the same night, the 15th, all at 6:00 o'clock. The high school's on the 22nd at 7:00, and the Ridge is on the 29th at 6:30. And then you have some off-days sprinkled in there for the Jewish holidays as well. So I thought it was important to kind of throw that out there for anyone who's listening, mark it on your calendars, there must be events. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. And important dates, just to highlight, are always at the end of our Board of Education agenda as well, including back-to-school nights. And we also have on here, let's see, the Jewish holidays, staff development days, et cetera. So take a look. All right, so for instruction and curriculum, we did meet with Dr. Bavino regarding curriculum writing. This has been a prolific summer here in Maua when it comes to curriculum writing. And I know that we had some singular focus on the health and PE. And I know that we had some singular focus on the health and PE standards, but I'd like to highlight a few other courses among our over 70 courses that curriculum writing took place for. So, one of those is in the Mawa High School Mathematics Department. This is computer programming and design, humanoid robotics and data structures. So, the new sort of changes and direction for course design, now the computer programming and design course will include a formal unit that includes the use of drone technology, which, I mean, kind of seems super cool. And there are jobs out there for this, students, listen. There are jobs with drone technology. And then data structures now includes a formal unit that includes robotic arm technology. Dr. Bavino said, any surgeons out there who might want to provide some Thunderbird partnerships in these areas of robotic arm, what you do, our teachers will be looking for any of those ideas. So, again, one very exciting area. Another one is in a course now that's going to be offered 9th through 12th called Advanced Learning Strategies. And this is a course to help students at Mawa High School, again, with executive functioning, things like planning and organization and time management skills. There will also be a focus on test-taking strategies. And they'll have, you know, weekly instruction on how to best prepare for assessments and day-to-day components of classwork and homework, et cetera. It's a great college prep class, career readiness class, and again, something new that's being added to support all of our students and to help them perform their best academically. We also have, and we have actually a few members in the audience that I thought I might highlight because we have our K through 12 social studies curriculum. There was some curriculum writing led, and one of the writers was Andy Butel, who's also our Mawa Education Association president. So, Andy, thank you. It's nice to point out people who've actually written some of this curriculum because sometimes it seems like it's just in the air, but there are specific staff members doing that. So, thank you, Andy. We also have, I think, Kathy Scarpelli and Eric Pragdat, who did a K through 5, again, social studies. So, it looks like there was, again, big push in social studies, K through 12 and K through 5, or 6 through 12 and K through 5. So, K through 12 altogether. So, anyway, thank you to the curriculum writers, all of them. Thank you to those who are in the audience today. And again, really exciting stuff as we continue to look at our curriculum, look at our academics and, you know, push forward to really bring the best here to Mawa. So, thank you, Dr. Bavino, and your entire team and all the people who worked on this. Really appreciate that. All right. Board member remarks. I will just start with our condolences on behalf of the board to our fellow board member, Ben Kismarski on the passing of his father, Paul Chip Kismarski. And he sounded like a truly tremendous gentleman who maintained that, you know, you need to smile and be happy, so live life to the fullest. So, anyway, our condolences to Ben and his family. Any other board committee remarks? Right? Mr. Copeland?
Thanks. I have a question and a comment. My question is to Mr. Bleecker. Driving by GW, it's hard to miss the plywood on the side of the building. Do we have a timeline for the window projects at the three different buildings? We're coming up with, you know, beginning of school and are there any accommodations we have to make for those teachers that have this going on in their classrooms or for the students that are in their classroom, classrooms?
The project is, I'd probably guess, at 80% complete, Mr. Copeland. The plywood, there is some that is going to stay on for the first couple of months. Some of the windows that, due to supply chain issues over the summer, could not come in. We do have anticipated dates for them to come in in the fall. And as soon as they do come in, the vendor is committed to get them installed as soon as possible. As I said earlier during my report, work that does need to be done can be done after school hours to make sure it's done as quickly as possible. As far as accommodations within the classroom, we have some accommodations there. We continue, classrooms always will have fresh air being brought into the rooms as well as anything else that the teachers might need or that the staff might need. Work closely with Ms. Blacky regarding it and want to thank her for her time work with us on that as well.
Thank you. My comment, I want to acknowledge Mrs. Kurt, who's out in the audience today. It's absolutely amazing to see her today. I've been following her story online. My daughter had her as a speech teacher at GW and she made a huge impact on my daughter. And I just want to say welcome back and it's absolutely amazing to see you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Copeland. All right, old business. The minutes, I think we're approving July 13th, July 27th, August 10th and August 15th. And, Mr. Bleecker, if someone, I'm just curious, if you're absent for one of those, do you abstain just on that?
Abstain from that particular meeting.
Okay, thank you for clarification. All right, Mr. Bleecker.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Sacco.
Yes, for July 27th and August 15th, but abstaining for July 13th and August 10th.
Thank you. Mr. Copeland.
Yes and all, but I'm abstaining on August 10th.
Ms. Devenaro.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
And Dr. Morty.
Yes. Okay, let's move to new business. All right, so let's take A through BB. All right, do I have a motion? Mr. Denise, second by Mr. De Silva. Any questions, comments? Okay, Mr. Bleecker.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Sacco.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes, and thank you to all the staff members that participated in curriculum writing. And I wasn't at the August 10th meeting, so I want to just thank Dr. Bavino for the comprehensive presentation.
Ms. Devenaro.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
And Dr. Morty.
Yes. Okay, let's move on to new business personnel, A through Z. Questions? Okay, I need a motion. Dr. Park, and a second by Mr. Gallo. Questions now? Any comments? Okay. Mr. Bleecker.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Sacco.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes, and thanks to all the volunteers on X for JK.
Ms. Devenaro.
Yes, I think some of it's X, which I abstained.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
And Dr. Morty.
Yes. All right, public questions or comments. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with Bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. It's a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. A motion to open the meeting to the public. Ms. Sacco, second by Mr. Copeland. All right, we are open to the public.
Good evening. Nikki Hertz, speech therapist at George Washington School. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and address the board with something that I've been waiting to say for a little while. To the board, the administration, the Mawa community and my colleagues, thank you for allowing me a few minutes of your time to say some things that I've been waiting to say for just about a year. Last August, I was diagnosed with stage 1B breast cancer after my son accidentally elbowed me in the chest on vacation and I happened to feel a lump. The whirlwind that ensued after finding a lump isn't unlike any other cancer story you hear. Ultrasounds, mammograms, biopsies, diagnosis, surgery plan, treatment plan. The diagnosis came on August 16th, 2021, on a beautiful sunny day. And on that beautiful day, my world crashed and crumbled and I found it hard to see any light. The difference in my story is that Mawa was there, surrounding me with light immediately. My colleagues formed an unbreakable chain of support around me from the second they knew I was diagnosed. Ms. Rizzo, Dr. Fair and Dr. Dittoro immediately made sure I knew that work would be there waiting for me when I got back because I would be back. And I had their support for the entirety of my journey. My mind was seeped confusion, terror and a mess of anxiety with having no control over what was going on. My colleagues, this community, this administration and these board members made it a priority to support me and think of everything I might need, I might want, without a sliver of hesitation. It is nearly impossible to describe in words the level of comfort and gratitude I felt knowing that work was okay, work was waiting for me. My work, my happy place, the place I love to go to every day with the people I love, was there, would still be there when I finished this journey and would support me the entire way through. This is the difference in my cancer story. It is incredibly humbling and wildly overwhelming to feel the love and the support I felt during this year-long process from all of you. It allowed me to focus all of my energy on fighting the beast of cancer and not straying from the fight. Texts, calls, cards, emails, food, visitors, donations of sick days, these are just a few examples of the tangible support that Mawa provided me, non-stop, for a year. What is truly incredible is the emotional support I received from everyone in the Mawa community. I was given space to breathe, cry, feel angry, yell when I needed to, but also to remember to laugh and to find the light, to feel strong and to curse cancer, to feel weak and swallowed up by cancer. The difference in my story is that Mawa was here for me, every step of the way, every second of every day. For me, one of the hardest parts of this process was being disconnected from the people in the place that I love, my work. But because of all of you and the incredibly powerful support you provided me with, I never once felt disconnected. Being kept on email chains, group texts and invited to the Zoom meetings were my lifeline on the hardest days. The days when I couldn't find the light, I would reread your messages and I would remind myself that I can do hard things, I can find the light and that I had an army behind me. When my work friends stopped by to drop off dinner or Starbucks or just to chat for a while, I would put my best lingerie on and I would smile ear to ear knowing that I would hear some funny things that went on at work or some cute things that my students did. I knew that on days where I felt strong, I could swing by work and say hi from a distance and I would be welcomed with open arms, even when I was unrecognizably bald with no eyebrows or eyelashes. So, I say thank you, but thank you was a funny phrase to me. I've used it more in the last year than I have in my entire life and it doesn't quite convey the level of gratitude I have for everyone in this community. My life was on pause while I dealt with cancer and all it had to throw at me, but everyone else still had the normal crazy of the day-to-day going on. And yet, there they were with me, physically, emotionally, they were with me, carving out time in their day, before work, before bed, on their way to work to reach out to me. So, again, I say thank you to Mawa for absolutely everything, but I thank you most importantly for keeping me connected to each and every one of you when it would be so easy for me to be swallowed up by the dark. Ms. Rizzo, you reminded me constantly of how strong I was and that the light was there. You sent me powerful quotes and let me curse cancer to you when I needed to. Dr. Fair, you somehow always knew when to reach out to me when I needed it the most and your texts kept me in the light. Dr. Dittoro, you kept me laughing with jokes exactly when I needed a good belly laugh. My GW family and my child study team, not only did you constantly think of me and what I needed, but you also thought of my family and provided support for my kids. Rick knew you were just a call away for absolutely anything we needed. I promised everyone that I would fight this beast with every ounce of strength that I had and that I would be relentless in my fight. Cancer came for me, but I'm far too stubborn to let it win. Bilateral mastectomy, 16 rounds of chemo, five weeks of radiation, a hysterectomy, constant physical therapy and part one of reconstruction done. I can officially now say that I'm a cancer warrior and begin to rebuild a new and improved semi-bionic me. Mawa, I finish this with all of the thank you that I have in my soul and I remind you of a few things that I've learned along the way. Find beauty in chaos, find strength in the power of the storm, find the light in the dark, breathe deep and trust the process, and most importantly, stay connected. I've waited a year to say, I'll see you all at work. Thank you.
I need a tissue box, I'm not sure we have a dry eye. Ms. Kurt, thank you for your inspirational message. I think it speaks to, I mean, I don't think there's more to say. I mean, it's just a perfect story as we go into the new year. And again, your words, I mean, I'm very glad that you're at the microphone and that you are back at work and your story is inspirational and incredible. And it's just wonderful to hear what we know about this wonderful team, this community, and to know that you felt all of that support and it allowed you to become the warrior that you rightfully have become. So, again, thank you. I think it just says it all. So, thank you very, very much. Very appreciative and glad to see you back. I was going to say, I wouldn't, I think it's, you know, science seal delivered, as they say.
I don't have a microphone. I said, no one wants to follow that.
Yeah, Mr. De Silva, it did. No, please, no apologies needed. It's nice to hear, it's really nice to hear the inspirational, you know, tone of your story. Thank you. Okay, a motion to close the meeting to the public. Oh, okay, not yet. Ms. Ryan, you're going to do it. She's going to follow it.
I'm going to follow it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, and congratulations on your victory.
Ms. Ryan, we can count on you now.
I know.
It's okay.
I wasn't going to, but I'm going to be aware for the next week.
Okay, all right. No worries.
Can't wait. And this is an easy one. Danielle Ryan, 22 River View Terrace, in Mawa. I didn't catch the number. I think you said there were nine emails about the curriculum. It's not important. I know it was a small number, but just thinking how last summer we had the survey for masking, perhaps in the future we can have something similar for such an important topic. It seems like relying on parents to come out. I've just been in the community now, like, you know, doing like meetups and things like that. And I've heard more than nine parents having questions, but a lot of people don't want to come up and speak. It's not easy to speak. It's not easy to voice your opinion. So, just a thought of like, something where we can reach more people because that seems like a very low number.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. All right, Mr. Butel.
All right, is this, you guys here? Tough to follow Nikki. So, sorry, Andy Butel, president of Mawa Education Association. And yeah, after Nikki spoke, I was really on the fence about speaking, but I feel compelled to share a bit just as we enter this new school year on behalf of the staff. So, as a teacher, I'm always excited to start the year. It's, I think, one of the best parts of teaching is kind of this finite beginning and end to every year. And so, what that brings is the kind of emotional goodbyes of June, but the eager anticipation of meeting new students in the fall, in September. Unfortunately, this year is certainly clouded a bit by the current state of public education and the teaching shortage that we're experiencing. There are a range of causes and this didn't start just this year, but certainly, certainly become exacerbated, whether it's, you know, the long-term financial causes of underfunding public education or growing. So we certainly fare better than a lot of places. Yet, even within this high-achieving, well-resourced district, we're not completely immune of this. At our high school alone, one out of every six members of our teaching staff who was there last year will not be returning this year. This includes members across departments at various stages of their career. Some left for other districts, some left professionally altogether, a few early retirements. Obviously, this takes a toll on our teaching staff. That, I think, goes without saying. But the impact extends beyond just our teaching staff. As we know, the number-one in-school factor affecting student achievement is teaching, is the teachers. So I, I share all this because I think it's important for the board and community to hear the perspective of the teacher, but also to ask for your help as we start this new school year. Again, fresh start for all of us. And so to the administration and the board, I think we've collectively worked hard at forging a really strong relationship, and I would ask for your continued support, for your continued prioritization of the needs of the staff. I think we've come a long way, but these numbers indicate that we still have work to do. And for the community, I would just ask that you see us, treat us as professionals, trust us, respect us. We've earned degrees, we've earned certifications, we engage in professional development. Most importantly, we're passionate about teaching and we care about young people. If you have questions, ask them. But please, see us as partners, not as adversaries. I've said before in this forum that education works best when all stakeholders are working together, and I think that's what we need now more than ever. So we're committed to maintaining the excellence of this district. I know that's your intention, too. But I think in order to remain in an elite district, we need to retain our elite teachers. So thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Mr. Butel, for your thoughtful comment. And we are, I think, very committed to what you're saying as well, as a board, that we value the teaching staff of this district very much, and I think the board and this leadership team at Central Office demonstrates that every day, but it's always a good reminder. So thank you very much. Okay. Anybody else? All right, motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Gallo, seconded by Mr. Copeland. All right, we will go into executive session, and then we will adjourn from there. Yeah, we have another executive session. And then we will adjourn from there, we will not come back. So everyone have a good evening, thank you, and again.
Motion.
Oh, sorry. Motion to go to recess to executive session. Mr. Copeland, seconded by Mr. De Silva. Thank you, and good night.